Jay Lane calls me in order. First item is roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Shaker.
Here.
Alderman Spelly.
Here.
Okay, uh, next item is invocation. I'll be led by Ryan Hunt this evening and be followed by pledge of allegiance from Alderman Headley.
We have the Father, thank you for the opportunity that we have to meet together and discuss business for the city. Lord, I pray that each and every one of us here will keep in mind the importance of that job and that it just helps us to make wise decisions and discuss the issues of it. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is the approval of the agenda.
Changes, ma'am.
Changes. Uh, seeing no approximations, then we'll move on to citizens' participation. Uh, we ask that citizens, uh, step forward to the microphone and podium and address the board, and please give your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing none, then we'll move on to consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
After votes from Alderman Spelly to accept the consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Seeing no previous business or new business, then we'll move on to discussion. First item under discussion is a 3:00 AM liquor license request from Charlie's Roadhouse.
Mr. Mayor, would Jamie speak first?
Uh, as you noticed, there was a lender in your packet from Charlie's Roadhouse. They are requesting, uh, that their alcohol license be extended to a 3:00 AM license. They currently hold the license with the city, uh, for liquor sales as a restaurant bar. Um, I believe we have, uh, someone here representing the organization to speak on the issue. Um, you have in front of you a copy of the liquor license ordinance. Uh, if you, there's been a few items referenced in that ordinance for you to review regarding your, uh, obligation as the board to confirm or deny this request and, um, the requirements of a 3:00 AM liquor license as well. Under our current ordinance, we are allowed to have another entity have a 3:00 AM liquor license in the city, uh, based on population, and, uh, currently we only have one other, uh, entity that has a 3:00 AM license. So, based on that and the information that was provided, uh, we'll either take questions or, um, I'd like Mr. Reisinger to stand and answer any questions that you all may have for him as well, so.
You go.
I'm Chad Reisinger, owner of Charlie's Roadhouse, 112 Southwest Eagles Parkway, Grain Valley. We're requesting a 3:00 AM license. Um, it's simply probably an economic thing for us. We've got a, a bar that doesn't serve food, so, um, we've got mostly a, a late night crowd, uh, probably after dinner, 10 o'clock crowd. Um, we're working very hard to keep the doors open and to generate revenue and, uh, for us and the city. And, uh, I think our record for safety and, uh, and, uh, uh, as far as not having any trouble in the bar, we've, uh, not had much trouble there at all, and, um, we'd just like to be able to keep the doors open a little longer and, uh, serve our customers that way, and we're not looking to change the form of the bar at all. We're, uh, we're a honky-tonk, uh, country rock and roll bar. Uh, we're not looking to extend the music any louder or any longer. It's just, you know, come 1:30, everybody's gotta go, and most, some of the patrons there have been there an hour or two maybe at that point, so, um, we're just trying to, uh, think of some ways to generate some more revenue for, for us and the city and, uh, and keep the doors open.
What type of, what type of security do you currently have there, and would you be looking at doing anything different?
Um, right now, I mean, I'm there, uh, every night. Uh, I work the door, you know, we don't have a door, uh, we don't charge the door or anything like that, but, um, I also have a bar back, which, uh, is there. He's a, he's a, a big guy. He, he's, uh, but we're, we're not a very forceful type of bar. Like, we don't, we're not, um, we don't like just trying, we don't, we've never really had any issues in there. We've always been able to mitigate anything that's going on directly right away. It's a small bar, so not much goes under the radar. Um, we have a really good group of core, um, patrons that care about us and care about the bar too as well. So, if they see anything, then they'll come and tell me, and, uh, we've been able to, to handle it without any violence in the place at all.
Do you have live music in there, or is it just, I mean, DJ or recorded, or?
From time to time, we do. Um, we started last year with a lot of live music every weekend. That didn't really pan out as far as, you know, it wasn't very profitable. We do a band, a live band, maybe once or twice a month now in the winter and nothing in the summer. We do, uh, uh, karaoke on Saturday nights. And so, like, a Friday night, we'll maybe two, two Friday nights out of the month, we'll have a band. Someone that we always have too. It's usually the same band in there that we know will bring a crowd.
So, are, are, so you're typically there, I mean, every night, or at least on Friday and Saturday, that you're looking at doing at 3:00 AM?
Yeah, and we're looking maybe, like, Friday and Saturday nights, just starting out, not every night. Um, and then, um, you know, maybe just if we've had, if we have a good crowd, a good group of friends that just wanna stay and hang out, we're not pulling drinks out of their hand at 1:30 and telling them they gotta go. We're just kind of playing it by ear, see if we wanna stay open a little longer and hang out, or if we wanna go ahead and go home. We're just not really gonna set any kind of standard as far as, you know, trying to draw a big group of frie- people in or anything. We just kinda wanna do it for us and...
How many, how many bartenders do you have?
Um, I've got one manager who's there most of the days, and then she's there at night too as well. Her name's Harley, and she's on our pool league team and dart league team and stuff like that. And then we also have, uh, two other waitresses that alter out, alter in and out, and some, and, uh, or a couple other bartenders, excuse me, and then one other waitress, a couple other waitresses. But really, it's not, uh, me and Harley pretty much handle most of it. When we, when we need someone else to fill in, they come in and do it.
Do you offer, and I'll tell you why I asked this question, any kind of, I guess, training or anything to the waitresses and bartenders and such about, you know, recognizing when someone's had enough, or, the reason I ask that's because in a 3:00 o'clock bar, it's a whole 'nother animal and that, you know, you'll get people coming from Blue Springs and other places at 1:00 in the morning because they're shutting the bars down, Blue Springs, and they may already arrive at your place, you know, intoxicated. So, it may be, you know, different than, you know, your regular 9:00 o'clock crowd that comes in and knew how much they've had to drink, 'cause they started drinking there.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's a good point. Um, you know, even though we're not a 3:00 o'clock bar, we've had that come up. I mean, people come in drunk and do not need to be served. We take that very seriously. Um, we, uh, you know, if there's any question about anyone that may have had too much to drink, we've always asked our bartenders not to serve them, and they don't. And in fact, they'll, you know, they'll tell us, uh, they'll call us if we're not there, um, and, uh, let us know what's going on. They've been really good about that, and they know that if there's any is- issues that come up, just to call the police right away. There's no, uh, you know, we're not, um, there to tell them to try and handle something on their own when we're not there. But, um, you know, even though we're not a 3:00 o'clock bar, that's definitely come up, and, uh, and I'm very proud of the staff and the way they've handled it. Uh, we take it very seriously. I've given people ride homes in my personal vehicle. Um, and, you know, a lot of times, somebody will, will kind of fight you on, uh, getting cut off, but the next day, they appreciate it and they come back.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Have we had any, 'cause it's close to, excuse me, the houses to the north. Do we have any noise complaints there?
Any, any issues outside of what Mr. Reisinger stated? He said, stated it's pretty quiet. I mean, have you guys had been called a lot?
As we stated, the establishment has not shown any particular high, uh, number of calls to service or recent incidents, uh, on occasion, um, here and there. There was, um, there was an incident, uh, around every day where there was some type of site issues, and, uh, Mr. Cook, uh, had those, that's what we're hearing right now. Um, no, I, I've actually, I actually queried all of, all of the department, all the supervisors this week, and actually I wasn't dissing anything, and I don't want to add anything other than just the normal concerns of police, uh, anytime you have a liquor establishment, you know, and mayor's tech on it, you're gonna have people that are gonna shut down a long bar, you're gonna have a bar. It increases the potential of issues that, like, we have no, no, um, data that indicates any kind of problem other than on occasion.
You have a, you have a patio there currently, don't you, that you? Yeah, I have stuff on sometimes. Would that be something that you would be looking at running until 3:00? Would be the outside patio, or? I'm just asking, 'cause I think you have some houses back up to you, right?
Yeah, um, no, we, uh, we tend to keep things low-key out back. There's a couple of chairs and some, and, uh, and some lighting back there, but there's, um, it's usually just some overflow or fresh air type of thing. We don't really have, uh, we don't have any music out there or, or anything, so, uh, right now, um, with the weather the way it is, might have a little, uh, just hanging out out there or whatever, but, uh, in the summertime, um, mostly, we're just, uh, once it gets dark back there, there's not really much to do. All the entertainments inside.
Uh, have you, have you visited with your neighbors behind you with the idea that you wanna do a 3:00 o'clock bar?
Um, no, there's a, there's a house actually right behind me that pretty much takes up the entire, um, backyard. I mean, their whole, my whole backyard is pretty much their whole backyard. It's a pretty large lot. It's about a, I would guess, an acre, or maybe a half acre, but it's pretty large. Their house sits really far away from ours. It's up by the road, and there's a lot of space in between us, and that house is vacant. And, uh, I've actually been inquiring about, uh, uh, purchasing that property. I just thought it would be a good addition to the property, but, uh, I haven't gotten any response from the owners there. The other, um, the other house right next to them that would be the closest proximity to us, um, are patrons. They come in from time to time. They can just hop the fence and come hang out, and they haven't, uh, expressed any interest in, uh, you know, or had, had any issues with us. They, uh, enjoy the live music. They can hear it sometimes, so they haven't, uh, said anything.
One more question. Chief, assuming you, you're saying that, you know, it's been fairly quiet from the standpoint of any issues you've had, but since it would be a 3:00 o'clock bar and other people coming into town, does that, do you anticipate any extra stress on the department, the guys that are working that, at night, with the existing 3:00 o'clock bar and then anything else that's going on? I mean, are you?
Well, that, I mean, that's one of those that certainly would raise the, uh, level of issues and also kind of be aware of, uh, activity or, you know, related problems, uh, with your, at the establishment, for a lot of people leaving, uh, it's one of those kind of the candidates, yes, if they're, you know, having, but, uh, traditionally, that's a, because you are in it, you're gonna have to come in and call our residents, and, uh, you, it'll be a cost to police, and, uh, be more attentive, you're, I'm sure, from, uh, starting in non-state areas.
How, how heavy are you staffed on Friday and Saturday night?
Starting at nine, till, sorry, three o'clock.
Okay.
We have, we have one person investigated, and that's what, sometimes they're off, so it's, 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 sometimes it's, it's, sometimes, uh, could have, there had been calls around the city, and it's a temporary issue like that.
Thank you.
I need to refresh my memory here. The bar that just, uh, that used to be the Silo, and then it was something else and something else, was, wasn't that a 3:00 o'clock license also? So, I'm curious what, uh, they had a 3:00 o'clock license, and they've changed names, and, and they've brought TV down here to change it, and they still couldn't make it. What, you know, you're asking us to put more stress on our police officers. So, what can you do that's gonna be different to them to draw the bu- the business in that the other bars can do, I guess, is what I'd like to know, before you ask us to stress, put more stress on our police department?
Sure, no, uh, that's a great question. Um, have you ever been in the Badlands?
I've been in the Silo, no, have not been in the Badlands, like, back when the Silo was there.
Yeah, so, from the time that I started, I was going there when it was Mardi Gras, and then it's been several other places, and that bar has always been a, has catered to the younger crowd in a hip-hop bar. Um, they pretty much changed their genre to, um, a lot of gangster music, and, I mean, I don't know how else to put it. I, um, and they draw in that kind of crowd. We're not looking to change anything about how we do or what we're doing and, and the type of person, or, uh, patrons that we draw to our bar. I mean, I know that from talking to some of the guys that, you know, they're looking for an alternative to the other 3:00 o'clock bars. They don't wanna go to a bar that's, that's that busy, that's that, that, that's, that, with that kind of music and that kind of trouble. They'd rather come to a place like our place where, uh, you know, it's kind of a, and everybody knows everything, everybody policy, but we also, we don't ha- we don't, we have, we don't put up with any issues in there. I mean, we have a no fight tolerance, uh, policy in there, and so, I think our, our patrons appreciate that, and I think that, um, once we can get some more people in the door and see what kind of a bar we are, I think that, that will, uh, I think that that will grow our business in a positive way. Um, at the fir- you know, um, with any kind of growing page, we're gonna see how it goes, and then, um, you know, if it's an issue, if, I, I, I don't think that, uh, you guys are gonna have to come to me to say, "This has gotta stop," because I'll, I'll know if it's not working out, and, uh, and I'll do something about it. But, but right now, you know, um, I think that, um, we could definitely benefit from being open from 3:00 and, uh, and try and keep the doors open. I mean, we're, we're not doing real great. I mean, we've lost some, I'm not, I'm kinda curious to see how things will go on that end of town with the racetrack gone, or if it's gone, I don't know, but, um, you know, it's, uh, it's been a struggle in the last two years, so we're, uh, we're just looking for some new options to, uh, see, um, how things would go. I, I'm pretty proud of our staff and our bar and our, our, our patrons there as far as how we conduct the business there. So far, we haven't had much trouble at all really in there, and, uh, anything that may have come up, we've mitigated right away, so.
If they serve food.
Is this just up for discussion or not, or are we looking for?
That's up to you. The code is not specific on this type of a request. So you can either...
It's specific that you can't do two reads tonight.
Well, it's specific you can't do two reads on a renewal application. It's not specific to a certain budget list.
But it has to be. There's got to be two votes though if they chose to. Right? They can't just do one vote though, right?
Sure.
Well, if anyone would wish to entertain the motion.
I'll make the motion. Will you approve the three o'clock license?
I have motion Alderman Johnston to approve the three o'clock license for Charlie's Roadhouse. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman West. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, what we'll do then is issue out license, subject this week. The education thing is in the database and some others just totally shoot fixed. We've already issued state licenses and county licenses, so we do have to issue them. I'll comment around and let you all know when it happens.
Next item under discussion is city charter.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I just wanted to bring this back to you. If you'll remember, about a month ago, I handed out some information regarding the procedures to move to a city charter from the City of Grain Valley just being a fourth-class city statutorily. So you've had about a month review. I just wanted to bring it back to you and just quickly go through the steps that if the board does wish to do this or move in that direction, these are the steps that you would need to follow. First, you have to place the question on a ballot, and the question has to be something to the effect, shall the city form a charter commission? If that passes, then at the next election, you would actually have to have a charter commission elected. So you have to have at least thirteen people that are on the ballot and the highest votes. So say you had twenty, the top thirteen of those twenty would be on the charter commission. They then have, from the time that they're appointed to the charter commission, one year to form a charter and come back to the public to vote on accepting the charter. With all that being said, I'm more than happy to answer questions, but I just wanted to make sure that I followed up as I committed last month.
Who pays for, I mean, there's legal fees involved in that. You got to have a lawyer present and all that. Is that city budgeted, or is that raised, or what covers that?
I would assume it's paid by the city.
So if they were wanting to do it, we'd have to budget for two elections, we'd have to budget more for two elections, and then budget for legal costs.
Right.
Involved.
Yeah, for example, if you had it on an April and August ballot, yeah, you'd have two elections that you'd have to budget for.
We wouldn't make this April's election.
No.
So we're looking at being two more years.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as you could get this on the ballot, it would probably be the August election. It's not a special election date, is it?
It would be.
August.
Okay, so that we'd have to go with.
Maybe it's a special election for us.
We don't have to put it on the August. We'd always go a year from the April if we wanted.
It would still have, you'd still have extra fees associated with it?
Right.
But yeah.
I mean, if you're going to do it, you would have to budget for it, because you're going to have to budget for the legal fees also, which we didn't budget for this year.
Correct.
So I mean, it's really, and I don't know how mu- any clue what that would even run?
That depends on if Mr. Cook will accept the coupon I have.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I mean, we almost had to talk to some other communities to see.
Who's done it?
Yeah. Took Raytown forever.
Raymore.
Raymore did it? Also Sugar Creek too. Sugar Creek and Blue Springs.
I had asked before, what's the upside and what's the downside? I mean, you know, to do it, just to be doing it, unless there's an advantage to it, I can't see spending a dime on it.
I think, just from what I've seen of it, it definitely has its pros and its cons. You know, the state sets out in statute the rules for fourth-class cities, and it doesn't always work the best. I mean, it's just literally a cookie cutter. If you're going to incorporate a city and your city's this size, here's the game rules. Once you grow in size, a lot of people move to a charter. That way, they can have more of a fine-tuned approach to purchasing, bidding specs, the setup of the government as far as how the elected body interacts with staff, what type of authority. You can choose if you want a city administrator or a city manager, you can switch to a city council-type form of government. All those things have different implications. So there are benefits if you want to kind of fine-tune the charter for Grain Valley and what we want. But there's a lot of work to go into.
I think the biggest one, I think, off the top of my head, would be, you know, petition initiatives on ballots.
Yes.
That's something people have always asked for that we don't have.
How about having to pay for failing wage on work we're having done? Can you eliminate that by having charters? And we spent a lot of, we spent three times what that was worth to have that roof done out here. We still have to do for the last.
That's been a long process, you have to have that.
We have to do for the waste. We don't save any here.
The big thing is you put a lot of things on the ballot. It gives the voters more right to vote on things. It's one of the huge things for me.
Yeah.
That's definitely. That's what the charter commission chooses. I mean, you never know what they're going to choose.
A lot of it is up to the charter committee to write it and how they write it. And there are a few things they can do, write savings into bids and stuff. Instead of two-year elections, which cost us anywhere from eight to twenty thousand dollars, if the charter board, everything, it depends on the charter board. The board members will do four-year terms instead of two-year terms, which is a saving to the city of eight to twelve, twenty, eight to, excuse me, eight to twelve thousand by not having an election every year. So depending on how they write the charter, it could be a good, really good thing. California, when they did the charter, they, some cities didn't do a very good job of writing a charter, and the elected officials took advantage of it. Yes, you have to pay attention to how it's being done, but if done right, it's a good thing for a city our size.
I personally don't think we have enough information to make a decision one way or another. I would really like to know the pros and cons from some of the communities around us, not out in California, but close to us, to see what advantages and disadvantages they see in that type of thing.
Right, and I think, Ryan, I don't know what happened, but we talked about getting Blue Springs, or somebody from Blue Springs, or the Sugar Creek to come down. If we decided to have a workshop on it, that was going to be one of the things, maybe one of the representatives from both cities come to the workshop and explain to us why they liked the charter. The only reason I used California was because they seemed to pop up the most with most issues, why they had problems with the charter. That's the only reason I brought them up.
On the flip side, we're going to bring in a couple of cities that switched, or go to a couple of large cities that didn't, and find out why they didn't. If we try and bring in, I mean, can't bring in bias to one side to give an opinion on it.
I think the important thing tonight was, I really just wanted to follow up and kind of get the temperature to find out if I should continue to pursue this, because that's, really, that is the next step, is a workshop where we can sit down and speak specifically about what the benefits would be to Grain Valley. I mean, I can tell you broad, general benefits as far as like setting term limits and that sort of thing, but really how it works in Grain Valley, and I haven't studied it to that detail to be able to give you those benefits.
In my first, I mean, in my personal opinion, I wouldn't want to do anything with it until we have the expenses budgeted, which would be next, I mean, next year. With that being said, I would like to, you know, I would like for us to talk to some communities that have recently done it, to get an idea of what the cost was.
Okay. We can certainly do that. I can start collecting that information. We don't have to be in a hurry for a workshop if it's not going to be able to go till next April.
I mean, I don't, that's my opinion. I don't.
Well, and it's a saving, a saving on elections. If you can put everything on the ballot, if you have elections, anyhow, everything's on the ballot, whether it's Alderman or whether it's issues.
Unless there's someone who's, I mean, unless you got to expedite it or something, but.
Just get the general information. I don't think you need to rush into it. It is a big step that needs to be definitely looked at a lot of different ways to make sure that it's right for our community.
Well, isn't it a very timely process anyway?
Yeah.
And then once you get started, it's a three or four-year deal?
I think it took Raytown three or four times before they got it passed, and they kept taking it back.
It's not going to happen overnight, no.
No. So you have the initial vote to place it, to form the charter commission, and then in the next election, you would actually select your charter commission. From the time the charter commission's selected, you have one year to turn it around and have it back on the ballot. So, yeah.
Typically, what I've heard, they very rarely pass the first time out, because usually there's one or two things on there that people, you know, get fixated on, and they have to go back to the charter commission and for review again. That's what I've heard. Typically, they don't pass the first time out.
Yeah, I think with a lot of the charter stuff, they usually don't, as far as just getting the question on the ballot originally. I think sometimes that can be a struggle.
A lot of that is getting information out of what a charter is. You know, reading about, one of the cases that didn't pass was because they didn't get information out to the public, just as, you know, because they were so used to being, forgive me, I forget, class four, I'll just say, and they were just so used to setting their ways of doing it. So when it came up, nobody knew anything about it, they voted it down. But after the city or whoever got their information out, and people realized that, you know, this is a better thing, that we have, for instance, the racetrack, you know, they get a chance to vote on things like the racetrack. They realize that they have more chances to voice their opinion at the voting polls versus six ladies and gentlemen from the period making a decision for them. And so then the next time it came around, it passed. That's one of the cases I read.
Yeah, education's the key part of it.
So I think we need to have a workshop, you know, get the ball rolling, and we start getting information.
Mayor, when would you like to see the workshop?
Well, it'd be sometime for you to collect the information and stuff. I didn't see you need to do one or set one tonight.
No, I'm saying, general direction, fall, summer.
Yeah. Well, I mean, probably the summer, because for budget, because you're going to need to know, going into budget, if it's something we're wanting to do for next year or not.
Okay.
That way you can budget appropriately.
I believe the number that I read was twenty thousand dollars is what it took to do it over a two-year stand. So basically, it was ten thousand, ten thousand one year, ten thousand next year, and that's basically what it costs to get the charter, put on the ballot, do everything they had to do. Don't quote me on that, but that seems to be the number that I had.
Okay.
Sounds awful cheap for drafting one. It sounds like the vote doesn't, like something like drafting a charter.
Well, that's why we're going to have a meeting on it and get the numbers.
I assess it's fierce more than that, because I know how much these attorneys' charges out there. Surrender.
Well, I'd say the twenty guys that I'm talking about was, you know, it was something I read off the internet studying it. So I'm sure each case is going to be different.
Yeah, if you want to start compiling some of that, you know, they can shoot us some numbers of what it costs them, and start there and talk about it in summer. Very good. Alright. Next up, ordinances?
Yes, sir. First ordinance is Bill B-15-01, second reading. It will be ordinance 2352. It is an ordinance approving the amended version of the 2015 City of Grain Valley, Missouri Compensation Plan. Second reading, it will be ordinance 2352.
I move that we accept Bill B-15-01, making it ordinance 2352.
I have a motion, Alderman West, to approve Bill B-15-01 for its second reading, making ordinance 2352. Do I have a second? Second Alderman, Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
West?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Six zero, Mr. Mayor. Second bill is Bill B-15-02. It's the first reading. It is an ordinance appointing Tammy Love as deputy city clerk, City of Grain Valley, Missouri. First reading.
Mayor, I recommend that we accept Bill number B-15-2 for its first reading, bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have a motion, Alderman Johnston, to approve Bill B-15-02 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman, Schaefer? No, Scully. Second Alderman, Scully. Any discussion?
Yeah. Why do we need a deputy clerk now? Has the demographics changed or something? That, I mean, we always just had a deputy, or just clerk.
No, we've had a deputy city clerk since 2012. It's just a change of role. We've been fully the homeowner and Pam Love at this point. So no longer will Clea love the deputy city clerk. It will cancel in fifteen.
It wasn't before Clea wasn't Pam considered it? We've had to have somebody or something.
We've had somebody do backup, but from a general standpoint, as approved by ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there?
I'm sorry?
And Clea's position now is what?
Executive position means executive assistant.
Yeah, she's the assistant to me and the community development. We didn't replace the assistant in community development.
Is there any official training she needs to get caught up on or do?
She's been carrying for about a year now under me and Clea, and she's involved in the organizations that I am with, with the clerk, organization state and national level. So that's continuing to be carrying as well. She's kind of one of those shadowy type positions, and she's been asserting through board meetings, and she provides all the information to me to prepare for the board meeting. So she's kind of here on her way to do this stuff.
Will it be of any help to get certified, or are you pushing her to do that?
It would also be very certified. I mean, she's in the process, it's about a two-year process, if she can make it to all of this training, with the way that our schedules are, and having the whole department to run HR as well, to the department to take her a bit longer. But she's on her way to moving out now.
Do you have anything else? All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six zero on the first reading, Mayor. Final bill is Bill B-15-03. It is the first reading. It will be an ordinance approving the final plat of East Kansas City Industrial Park, 11th Plat, City of Grain Valley, Missouri. First reading, Bill B-15-03.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B-15-03 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have a motion, Alderman Schaefer, to approve Bill B-15-03 for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman, Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six zero first, Mayor.
Seeing no resolutions, move on to the city attorney's report.
Report, Your Honor, thank you.
Next item then is city administrator and staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Most everybody has one. We'll start with Keith Starbuck.
We're continuing on the research of the police department and in the next conference call. See, the promotion of two officers to the rank of sergeant, two sergeants to the rank of captain. We did introduce this week, and we're promoting one officer to detective, to replace Detective David Turo, who's already become sergeant. So a lot of chuggling, and we are in the process of a hiring process, hire three and maybe four new officers who replace the only things we have. Just a small, little, fifteen people that were appropriate for bringing that protection back to the unit in the week.
Ken?
Just a couple of things. In the last couple of weeks, we have focused on our website as well as our standalone youth baseball and softball website, advertisement about our upcoming spring baseball and softball season. February first, registrations will start, and continue through the end of February, and then in March, we'll have our coaches' meetings. Usually by the end of March, practices will start up. So just kind of want to give you an FYI that we're in great shape as far as playing summer baseball and softball. Makes a concern. And this will be one of probably about three more updates, and I'll provide to you all around the course of the season with that. The second thing is, we did offer bid for a full management services for a three-year contract. We've passed several contracts that we had in three-year terms. Our bids came in last week. We did receive two bids. We're currently reviewing both of those bids to make sure everything that was stipulated in the criteria was provided to us. So we plan on having a full management firm in place, contract in place, ring for next board meeting on the contract board.
Shannon, your t-shirts and stuff, Alexander, I feel we, you know, try to buy local. Have you had a chance to talk to him?
Yeah.
And what we're having with him?
Yeah, I've actually talked to him a couple of times, most recent time being actually this morning. I'm at a dis-sport. So we're in the process of, with something like this, with the amount of kids that are going to be going through the program and the cost of being involved with the jersey and hat and so forth, for our purchasing policy, we'll need to get bids. Anthony will definitely be involved with that. And obviously, we're going to do everything in our power to keep the business here local and try to utilize it, Alexander, apparel.
What do you say?
Mr. Murphy?
Mayor, we're just having to ask to kind of look at the traffic circle there on Snybar and look at options as far as cost goes, for what, what would we take, the city would take that over? And really, the cheapest, maintenance-free option that we've come up with is still going to be just under thirteen thousand. That would be removing what's there, basically having your three sidewalks that need to be there to meet the connection that we have, making those ADA compliant, and then just having the rest of it be grass. That was still almost thirteen thousand is what we're giving up our estimate, and that would be with us doing the work. So I don't know if that helps you, but that was the cheapest and most easy to maintain option that we came up with.
Is there going to be any, besides the any center display, I know a fountain.
That would not be, yeah, the fountain's there now. I think it has a little vandalism issue, and I think it's, it looks to be just, you know, just wrap it.
We've got the bowls still good, but other than that.
Right, now the sidewalks, the sidewalks aren't ADA, they're not wide enough?
Yeah, it's not really the sidewalk in, because it comes out into the roadway.
There really been a ramp there to get up in there?
You'd have to have a ramp, and they'd have to have those detectable warnings, little orange or red plastic gills. Like you see Alderman here, where they've done that? Oh, that did the work. So even what seems pretty simple, it's a little complex with that.
Ms. Bowden?
The only thing I have is the auditors have scheduled their timeframe to be the last two weeks in March. So we'll be working with them to get it audited for the presentation to the board in May.
And Ms. Rames-Meyer?
I wanted to let you all know, it was noted in staff matters in January that we will be issuing new ID badges, as you recall, in our six-year tour ticket. And we will be issuing the new ID badges sometime in the first week of February. So that will replace any current ID badges that staff members have as well, like your kid card that allows you access into the building. So what we'll probably do is provide you with those with the next board meeting on the night, and it will replace the cards that you currently use with those that we'll have received. So I'm very much excited where we are with those, and I'm pretty excited about it. Long time, it's been working on this quite a time.
Mr. Mayor, I've got just a few things. At the last board meeting, there were a couple of questions related to websites. First, the web, our existing website is in the process of being updated. We've been working with each department head to go through and check their section of the website to make sure the information's up to date. Had a status report today in our department head meeting, and I think the majority of the work is done. Did the staff matters get up by the end of the day? Okay, so all the staff, or I'm sorry, all the citizens newsletters have been updated and put onto the website. We've deleted some obsolete sections. We used to have the business newsletter back when Gary was here that hasn't been done in four years. So we took that off the website, and we're still working through a few other things. Alderman Arnold had asked about the website costs for the new website, and there was an increase in the cost. I did some checking with Keith Stidman. Originally, when we set out to do the website, they did not figure in making it a platform that would be compatible with mobile devices, tablets, that sort of thing. So the increase in the cost for the website is to make it so that it's viewable, basically. It'll, our website will have a mirror version that's a mobile website. That way, people can use their tablets, their mobile devices, that sort of thing. And once we do that, then we can work in all sorts of things, like paying your bill from, you know, your phone. So it'd be, it wouldn't be a good idea to design a new website without using that technology. I've had a couple of questions from Alderman about Forty Highway and Snybar, so I thought I'd just bring everybody up to date. Staff met with MoDOT about three weeks ago, and we discussed with the area engineer, Matt Kidwell, and one of the traffic specialists, Cedric Owens. And we talked about different ways that we can continue to try to reduce the accidents at that intersection. We threw around the idea of lowering the speed limit. MoDOT was not going to be able to do that. Their traffic studies showed that that would not be feasible to have a forty or forty-five mile per hour speed limit in that area. We talked actually about all sorts of ideas. One of the things that keeps coming up is additional traffic lights or streetlights at that area. The existing FAA plan that MoDOT submitted, they already categorized several things in that area as obstructions to the runway. And so the FAA said that they would not allow any more lights, you know, visual detection signs, anything like that in the area. MoDOT thinks that there may be a possibility to get a street light on the north side of Forty Highway, and if they're able to do that, it would better illuminate the intersection. And we're also playing with a couple of different signage issues as well as, ideas as well as striping. So all those things are forthcoming. We're still working on it. We've been working on it for probably the last two years. I mean, since they installed the turn lane, we've still continued the dialogue with MoDOT. So I will update you as that develops. Last thing that I had is today, Movado, which they are a real estate company, a national firm, they released the 2013 safest cities. So even though it's 2015, they go off the data from 2013. I was pleased to say that Grain Valley was number six out of the entire state. We were the sixth safest city, I knew I was going to mess that up, in the state. So that's fantastic news for us. Last year, we were nineteen. And basically, what that means is that the possibility of a person being involved in a crime is so low that they consider this the, one of the safest cities out of the entire state. So they release a top ten. I think last year, you'll remember, Safe Cities actually did a study, and we were twenty-sixth on that, twenty-sixth on that list. So we continue to creep up. But we'll have a press release going out about that tomorrow, and you'll see it on social that tomorrow, and you'll see it on social media as well.
Okay. Next up, supportive Alderman reports and comments. Alderman Arnold?
Just one thing, Mr. Shannon, one thing that brought to my attention is the possibility of trying to align our dates for registration for the spring football, baseball with the neighboring communities, because some of the coaches that I spoke to expressed a concern that because ours was later than some of the neighboring areas, they were losing children from our community going there because they didn't know what to plan for here, because ours didn't start till, till after everybody else's. So something possibly to look at to see if we could get our, our dates to coincide with those, so that there's less confusion for those people wanting to make a decision which program to go with.
Yeah, and predominantly, everybody usually starts around February first timeframe. I know a row, I think it was a week earlier. I mean, I'm not sure the rationale behind that or not, but, but we have been, and I was worried that they were starting a week earlier. Odessa's February first. Those are the communities we're, we'll be interlinking with baseball too. But it wouldn't hurt for us to start a week earlier, or at least coincide with what everybody else is doing, absolutely.
That's all.
Alderman West?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Headley?
Uh, just wanted to thank, thank you, Ryan, for responding to a quick Saturday when I had a constituent call with an issue, and fortunately, it was solved fairly quick, and the city had done what they said they were going to do. So appreciate it.
Yeah, I got an ice whistle.
Yeah. I was second on the list.
Alderman Scully?
Last Thursday, I went to the school board meeting, and they had a bunch of kids recognized for their state bans, cheerleading, such and such. They had a full house there. And other than that, everything's going okay.
I'd just like to note on that, Alderman Scully, that that information was provided to us and-
I was going to ask you afterward. Dr. Welly said he's passed it on.
Exactly, with some, with some dates for recognition from the city as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Schaefer?
I got a couple of things. Ryan, should we get an update on the racetrack and where we're at with that?
Um, yeah, the racetrack, Dennis Schrow submitted a new application for conditional use permit right around Christmas. That's been set for February eighteenth for the Planning and Zoning Commission to hear the case or see the application, review it, and that will be a public hearing, so notification will be going out as well. Depending on what happens at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, you guys will have it shortly after that.
Thank you, Ryan. Um, I've been, I've been getting a couple of phone calls on fences throughout the neighborhood, and Ken and I have talked about some of the fences that probably ought to take a look at. Have you had a chance?
Ray was actually upset today, but I already forwarded an email to him to kind of look around and see where those issues are. So I'll be back tomorrow and get looking at that.
The only other thing I got is on the cul-de-sac on Lake U-1206, it's a cul-de-sac, but it makes a funny hook in there, and you can't really see it's the cul-de-sac. You want to know, we could work on getting a sign put in there to warn people that it's not a three street, so they don't have the traffic going up through there and turning around like they had.
Sort of no outlet, yeah. Ken can have that handled.
Good, thank you, sir.
Alderman Johnston?
This time?
Okay. Next up is marriage report. I have just one thing I wanted to ask the board and city staff. Some of you are aware that my wife got wrangled into, like, being kind of in charge of the fair this year. It means I'm kind of doing a lot of the default. So I was, you know, we were lining vendors and stuff up, and I was thinking, you know, about, you know, the city having a, a city booth at the fair. And I just wanted to see if there was any interest in that, if it would have, you know, enough interest in manning it throughout, you know, the Friday and Saturday. And I was thinking, you know, people want to do like a two-hour shift or whatever, and we can put that on the schedule, like Alderman Arnold will be there from eleven to one. I mean, I don't know, you know, department heads or whatnot. I mean, I don't know if we'd have enough interest to do that, to man it for Friday and Saturday or not, so I just wanted to throw that out there and-
Well, I don't think I'm going to be able to, because I'm going to be helping you at the fair.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, sir, you know, think about it and let me know. We've got plenty of time to do it, but I just want to throw it out there. I don't think we verbally make an opportunity for people to come up and just stop by and say hi, and maybe ask questions if they have them, so. Other than that, I do not have anything else. I don't believe we have a need for an executive session, do you understand?
Sure.
All right. We have no need for an-